All right, Craig, when I be ready.
All right, let's go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Shaftesbury's regular Select Board meeting for Monday night, August the 5th. It's a beautiful night, one of the nicest days of the summer, I think, today.
It was beautiful.
So, if you are watching us, thank you from coming in, from enjoying the outdoors, and if you're watching on tape, we understand. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with any item on the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. All right. Approval of minutes. We have minutes for the regular meeting on July 15th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Any discussions or corrections proposed?
On page, let's see, under number four, approval of warrants. I think that the last sentence in that motion to approve items, I don't think we actually had a motion, Sean, to approve items over $1,000. I think it was just the general, as far as I remember, would have been the general warrant, number two.
When Craig asked you guys unanimously, is that just worth just saying carries unanimously, or?
No, no, that's, that's fine, but usually what happens is that someone makes a motion to approve the general warrant, someone seconds it, and then there's discussion. And then, what part of that discussion had to do with the items over $1,000. So, but then, when we vote unanimously on the, or we voted unanimously, that's basically on that first motion. So, there wouldn't, you, we don't need another motion for any specific.
Right.
The other, on, on number seven, second paragraph down, this has to do with the parking ordinance. I was a little confused. It, the second sentence in that second paragraph says, "It was noted that further hearings were needed within the process of formally adopting the revised ordinance." I'm not sure if that was a reference to something else, but we really don't need further readings.
We don't.
Right.
Right.
So, I would, I would suggest that we strike that sentence. Because it just, I think it's maybe a little confusing. And my, I think it's my last one, let's see, under 14 other business, Karen Mellinger, cited concern of areas around town which require, rather than landscaping maintenance, I would probably just say mowing. It would be nice if we landscaped, but. I, and then sought more information regarding the mowing schedule. And then, I don't know what time we adjourned, but it's, usually, Sean, we try to indicate when we.
The time.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not quite sure what that time was. Anyway, those were mine.
Okay, thank you. Mitch?
No.
Ken?
No.
All right. Being no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, or as Karen suggested, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we have minutes for a special meeting on July the 18th. This meeting was primarily to approve financing for the new highway vehicles, and to have a public hearing as related to a submission of a bicycle pedestrian grant application. And so, those two items were really, they were the only two agenda items, other than signing a warrant. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve. I just have one quick question.
One second. Okay, Karen, your question is?
Margie, this, there's a reference in that motion, under warrants, installment payment to West Fuel for fuel pre-buy.
West Oil for number two.
Yeah. Was that for a pre-buy, or was that for a quarterly payment, or something? That doesn't seem like enough for a pre-buy.
Well, we, you're right, it's, we pre-buy, we were pre-buying, or let's say it's a fixed, they gave us a fixed price, we had four payments.
Okay, okay.
So, first installment.
First pay, yeah.
Right.
First installment, first of four installments.
Right. That's like the budget plan, or something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was my only question.
Any other questions, comments, Mitch or Ken? Okay, there being no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the warrants as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That motion carries, I should say unanimously, four zero, because we do have one number missing this evening. Okay, next, we have warrants. We have several of them this evening, because it has been three weeks since we last met, so. The first one is, is, I'm just going to make sure, this is the small one, this is the payroll.
Got them in order of, the Beamers' warrants first.
Beamers' warrant, okay, sorry, that's.
Retirement.
Retirement warrant. P R.2, in the amount of $130.37. Motion to approve.
Second, sorry.
Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant, Beamers' payroll warrant for retirement, number two, in the amount of $130.37, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That motion carries four zero. So, this must be more of the same. This would also be, this would be payroll warrant three.
Beamers, D.C.
In the amount of $126.32.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That motion carries four zero. Next, we have.
No, these are your actual payroll.
Payroll, payroll warrant two. It's a bi-weekly payroll amount.
Yeah, we're now all just bi-weekly.
Yeah, the amount of $17,698.57.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, well, four zero. Next, we have payroll warrant three, in the amount of $16,167.86.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Next, we have check warrant four, in the amount of $14,485.44.
Motion to approve.
Second. This side, this warrant, the items that exceed $1,000 include our Blue Cross Blue Shield payment, $7,127.82. Our payment to the Bennington County Sheriff's Department, in the amount of $1,192.73. John Ray &amp; Sons for fuel oil, $1,206.26. K.A.S. Incorporated, that, what, are they involved, is it, are they engineers, they're engineers?
Well, they do a number of things. They do our, they're working with us on design services for the sidewalk project, but then we have them on retainer for groundwater monitoring.
Correct, which I believe that's what this is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that amount is $1,750. Any questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor of approving check warrant number four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And last, but not least, in the bill paying this evening, payroll or check warrant number five, in the amount of $60,133.89.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, items above $1,000. William E. Daly Incorporated, $7,990 for calcium chloride. Green Mountain Power has several bills, of which they equal about, I'm going to say approximately $1,500, round numbers, for various separate accounts. John Ray &amp; Sons, there's two invoices here for just short, or just over $2,000 for fuel oil. Kansas State Bank of Manhattan, this is a lease payment, $22,985.72.
That's the last payment on our 2009.
Okay, good, okay. Paving Maintenance Supply Company, $3,567. I'm assuming that's for the crack sealer material.
Correct.
Many of you probably saw that many of the cracks around town were sealed with a different type of sealing mechanism, that supposedly the new and better solution, we'll see how it holds up. Does cause problems if it is cracking and breaking. We have two invoices from Sycamore Landscaping totaling $2,150. We have two bills from TAM Incorporated, one for a May bill and one for a June bill. Those are the regular monthly payments, correct?
Correct.
The May one is for $6,172.29, and the June is $6,591.24. And all other items are under $1,000. Yes, ma'am.
One quick question, on about the fourth or fifth one down, Barney Construction, it says excavator, Greens Pit. They had to move the excavator to repair it. We had no way of getting up onto a, a way to haul it. And they called El Barney. I asked the same question.
That's the, the.
You need a big, you need somebody like the Craig Weaver.
Big rig, sort of thing to haul.
And he was available right away to come over.
Got it.
That was for the cat, right?
So, that was to bring it back, and now it's, it's being worked on. Okay, thank you.
That was the track, it's the track excavator.
Yeah. Any further questions? Being none, all those in favor of approving check warrant number five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries four zero. Karen, anything for announcements this evening?
No. Other than the grant went in, I guess that's the, that's.
That's noteworthy.
That's, it's an announcement, yes, it's, hopefully, it's, I didn't check with them, but I'm assuming they, it arrived up there, as it should, ahead of time, so.
Mitch?
Yeah, we have, the Historical Society is having the annual chicken barbecue on August 25th, from 2:00 to 4:00, with Seth Bongart, the Director of Hildene, coming down to speak about Abraham Lincoln. Tickets are on sale by calling me, or at the Chocolate Barn.
Thank you. Ken? Margie?
I have no announcements.
Okay, nor do I. All right, public comments. Does any member of the public have anything that's not on the agenda, that they wish to speak about this evening? Phyllis, I knew you did, come on up and join us.
Thank you. I am Phyllis Corio, speaking on behalf of the Economic Development Committee. In 2008, the Economic Development Committee, on behalf of the Town of Shaftesbury, applied for and received Village Center designation for Shaftesbury Center, as well as the Village of Shaftesbury. It was a five-year designation, it's up for renewal on September 3rd. One of the requirements is, for the application renewal, is a motion on the part of the Select Board to support the application, so I'm here to ask for that, if you would consider making that motion. I have details on what the Village Center entails, if you want to take the time to go through it.
Well, I was hoping that maybe if you just kind of hit some of the high points, Phyllis, because we do have a couple new members on the board that were not here at the last time, but again, by all means, not the, not the detailed version.
Sure. Village Center designation is something that the State of Vermont grants to villages and towns, as well as cities, that allow for businesses within those designated areas to achieve tax credits for improvements they might do. So, for instance, there's a 25% facade improvement tax credit, there's a 50% code improvement tax credit. So, if a business within the district improves the electrical systems, they could be entitled to a 50% tax credit, 50% of the cost of that improvement as a tax credit. The very innovative thing that they also have, the state also allows, is that if a business can't use its full tax credit, it can sell it to its mortgage company. We understand it's sold for 80 to 85 cents on the dollar, but that gets their mortgage reduced by the amount of tax credit that they haven't used themselves. For Shaftesbury, the two areas are South Shaftesbury, and it runs from the Harrington Garage on seven, on the south end of 7A, up through to Daniel's Road, and includes Paulin's along 7A. It's one property deep along 7A. And on Church Street, it also runs one property deep across Shaftesbury to include Paquin, T.J. Paquins, I believe is the name of it, and then crosses over and picks up the old Stanley Tools, and comes across to, up to Daniel's Road, and comes back out at Daniel's Road. So, any businesses within that area are entitled to apply for a tax credit if they make improvements. The Economic Development Committee, when we first received the application, five years ago, held a number of information meetings, and went out and called on the larger businesses on that area. We intend to do the same again this year. And then, in center Shaftesbury, it runs from the Tattoo Parlor on the east side of 7A, up to and including a property that is across from the Galusha Homestead, and then cuts across, includes the Galusha Homestead property, and comes down, back down to Wins Landscape and Design. So, and again, it's, in some cases, it doesn't include the full width of the property, where there are only residential residences in that area, and in others, it extends the full width of the property. And the maps are on file, if you want to look at them in detail.
Is there also, Phyllis, and I'm, and maybe I dreamt this, is there some correlation to this also in relation to grants for the town here, in, in the center of town, that this can affect?
I, yes, and I think Karen can speak to it.
Yeah, I mean, the grant that just went in for the sidewalk, one of the, I think, if you remember, I had gone through the criteria at the special hearing, and it's basically, you know, you get a 1 through 10 score. And if you have, one of the criteria was, does your town have, is it a designated downtown or a village center? And the fact that we were able to say, yeah, I, Phyllis and I spoke about this, because I knew it was upcoming, in terms of the new application, but because we have the designation, it does give priority to the town, in terms of grant applications.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I thought there was a correlation there, so, this, go ahead.
So, in addition to getting the Select Board minutes, supporting the application, there needs to be evidence of a planning process, endorsement by the Regional Planning Commission, support from B C R C, support from B I C, and we're in the process, we've got a checklist of five things that we need to do, all of them are in process right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you to the D.C. for following through on this, we really appreciate that. Is there any other questions for Phyllis?
Does that include just a certain individual property, Phyllis, or is it a certain depth, like, is it like, from our garage down there, from Route 7 West? Does that go like 200 feet, or is it the whole depth of the property?
In that particular instance, it runs behind the Mobile Park, and comes out on Cleveland Avenue, so that it also includes a couple of the home occupations that are on Cleveland Avenue.
Like the Kettering Place down there, too?
I don't know that it, is it, is it back that deep?
I don't know which is the Kettering Place, I'm sorry.
That would be the, 1, 2, 3, about the 5th house down on Cleveland Avenue.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
What, yes, it does.
Okay.
One of the things that the new process requires is that we identify all businesses and home occupations within the area. I came in to speak to the zoning administrator, but we don't have such a database, so unless somebody has a sign in front of their property saying what their business is, I can't list them.
Now, this, if anything, is a residence right now, it can be converted to a, a business?
If they go, it's not a change in zoning, so it doesn't open it up to allow for a residence to become a commercial business, unless zoning is allowed, unless commercial enterprise is allowed by zoning on that particular site. However, home occupations are allowed in the residential area, so if they are a home occupation, if there is a residence and they want to create a home occupation, and go through the necessary process to apply for a home occupation permit from the Development Review Board, then they would be entitled to these.
I know some of the houses down, like from my place north, had been at one time a doctor's office, now it's a residence. You know, one of them was a lawnmower chainsaw place, and now that's a residence.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, it's kind of gone both ways.
So, I think the idea behind it is basically, if it is a business in this area, they can then apply for some of these.
Yeah.
Credits or tax breaks that might be available, if they're still a business, at the, sometime during the next, this is a five year.
Five year.
Sometime during the next five years, then they would be able to conceivably apply for some of these things, if they have a business there.
So, if a person is, wants to go through the D O B, set up a home occupation, they don't need to be listed, even though they want you to try to identify them as, at the time of application.
Right.
But, other people can be added in.
I, it's my understanding that, yes, any, any property within the designated area could be. It, it, there isn't a guarantee, they have to apply for the tax credit, you know, and I'm not familiar with what that application entails.
Is there a certain pot of funds for the tax credits, and was that used up, and no one else get it?
Yes. So, it's competitive, just like the sidewalk application is competitive.
Yeah, yeah. Phyllis, when is the application due?
I believe it's September 3rd. We are working on, it says in September 2013, on September 3rd, 4:30 PM.
Okay.
Is when it's due, and the Board will consider the application on September 23rd. Since we already have a designated area, we do not need to attend the meeting. Last year, we had to go up with a full presentation with maps and, and everything, now we just can email them everything.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Is there a boilerplate form that you filled out for the tax credits?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That's not in the packet that they sent me, so I don't know what the current one is, but there was.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'd like to make a motion, first, I'd like to commend the Economic Development Committee members for pursuing this, because I think it really is a, you know, it's a terrific program for our businesses. I'm wondering, do we, and you mentioned, we don't have a database, how can we get to that? You know, because I, this is, this really is great, this is, this would be wonderful information, to get to some of those small businesses. And I'm just wondering if, if there's a way, I mean, I know you and I had spoken about this years ago, and I had started a list, because I think, actually, it was around 250 stuff, and I was looking for a list of businesses to solicit for 250 funds. And I had a lot of folks giving me cards, and trying to generate a list from that, but, you know, I would just suggest that maybe that's something the economic, and maybe you're already on that, looking at, trying to come up with a database.
Well, I believe it was written into the zoning administrator's job description, because that's the person who would know, because the applications for establishing a business on a property is there, and the files are.
Yeah.
In the zoning administrator's office. When I talk to Tyler, I fully understand, within the number of hours that the administrator can work.
Yeah.
There isn't time to go backwards to.
Right.
To call the files to do that, but, you know, I don't know if some are interns.
Well, it might be, maybe it's a project for volunteers, to, to try to work on, because I think it would be really helpful, even, even frankly, to get our businesses, you know, links to their, to their information on our website, you know, plumbers, electricians, I, I would think that would be a real benefit to them.
I think that would be a good thing for the new lister application we're getting. Every parcel, every business has a parcel, pays taxes, it's all tied in with the state, who pays what, and if we have little, on the web package we're buying for the listers, I think that would be a home occupation or business, or something, check.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't say whether it's 100% or 40%, or, but you can at least know there's a business occupation there.
Right.
Right, right. Well, in, notwithstanding that, I would make a motion that the Select Board strongly endorse and support the Economic Development Committee's application for the renewal of the Village Center designation.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I think it's a good idea.
As do I.
Oh, we have one question out here.
Hi, I have a question. I'm Mark Bullhart, I live on 7A. I was just working my yard, and neighbor said, "Get down to TV and watch this," so I can, are you Phyllis Corio?
Yes, I am.
We've never met. I have a question regarding a house two doors away from me.
Wait a minute, you have a motion, you have a motion on the.
It's under discussion, isn't it?
Do we go second? Well, it, does it have to do with the Village Center designation?
Yes.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as in-home business, the neighbor two down, two doors down the street from me, Alan Martin, had a tenant in there years ago, that wanted to start an in-home business, a tenant, they opened the business, tenant moved out, Alan's got his wife running the real estate insurance. and insurance business there. And I don't understand why, when Tony, Tony was the administrator, there's a big sign in front of his that does not meet the sign ordinance, it's been up there over 10 years now. And Tony, I came to Tony, and he said, "Well, let's go measure it." I stood out in the middle of 7 A, and Tony took the tape measure up to the sign, he said, "No, this is wrong, it can't happen." And he said, I said, "Can you handle this?" He said, "Yes." I wasn't home an hour when the state trooper came to my yard and gave me a sheet of paper, no trespassing, on Watson's property. And I said, "Well, what's this for?" He said, "I gotta go give one to Tony, too." I explained to the trooper, I was out in the middle, what I'm getting to, he's got an occupation there now, he put a big double car garage in the back with an extension on it, nothing's been through D R B, nothing's been approved, and now it's a mess. I've been to Tyler, I've been to every zoning administrator you've had, and nobody's done nothing. Now, behind his garage, it's got to be as tall as me, some of the weeds and everything else. There's skunks in there, there's rats in there, and he does nothing to keep the place nice. Now, he's got a third party in there with a New York plate on it, and they're doing landscaping work, lawnmower, commercial lawnmowers, and they're changing oil right in front of the garage. And all that has been laying there for two years now, and nobody's done nothing. Alan did not get approval for that garage, your zoning administrator cannot find any paperwork on it. He added it on when, what's her name, was still alive, she said, "I don't understand how he could do that, what's her name?"
Angie.
Angie, she couldn't do, and I can't get any resolution out of that. And every time I go to the zoning administrator now, he says, "I send him a letter," and then he does more, leaves more stuff out there. There are tires there, there's 16 tires there that have been there over two years. And when he put that garage up, he brought used metal plows and everything else, and that's behind him, overgrown. And what do we do to clean this up?
I defer to you, because it's not an Economic Development Committee question, so I'm sorry.
Well, it's the wrong stuff, and then it's going to grow and grow and grow, and nobody controls it.
Yeah, that's.
Mark, that is a, those are concerns. It actually doesn't apply, or it doesn't affect what we're doing specifically here. We will, I will have the, bring the concern back again and pursue it and see what we could do to solve those problems, see if we can take it to a different angle. So far, there hasn't been a resolution of it.
It's been years. The last conversation I had with this fellow, he said, "I don't know what to do." He says, "Every time you go over there, it's worse." So, I told him, "I'll give you 30 days, and I'm going to bring the Bennington banner up here." I've already talked to a reporter, cleaned up a place on West Side Drive that Alan Watson was working on, between the Kirk, one motel and a diner there, and it sat for two years, finally. And Kevin Goodyard just shows his hands up when he mentioned Alan Watson's name. The back of the house is not finished, he's got all his stuff in one garage, every time he complains, he does less. And it's never been brought up to any of you people, I can't believe it. And if she's on the Development Review Board...
I'm not.
No, 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 no.
Economic development.
Okay, well, that's economic development, he hasn't finished. And the sign is illegal, I don't know how we're going to get that down.
But this is, these are enforcement issues?
Yeah, they are.
That really, that really need to be addressed.
Nobody enforces anything. Now, I looked on the new webpage, and it says, "All these people are appointed by a select board." Where's enforcement coming?
Right noted.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks for bringing it forward publicly.
Okay.
Okay.
Matter of fact, we have a motion and a second, I believe, for the motion that...
A second.
Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor of endorsing the electronic, electronic, economic...
The electronic submittal of a renewal application.
There you go. Thanks for, it's a better recovery than mine. Of the Economic Development Committee's application for renewal of the village center designation, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Phyllis, for bringing that to us.
One, can I just bring up one point, Phyllis, maybe while you're still here? My only concern with making a motion on it is that it was not on the agenda. And I just passed Margie a little note, her suggestion, and I think we might just want to do that, is to ratify that vote again at our next board meeting.
And we warn, warn the discussion.
Because I don't know if they require you to have the agenda that lists it on.
But last time, we just submitted the one...
Just the minutes.
Just the minutes.
Yeah, it seems.
Okay, okay.
I will not be available on the next select board meeting.
On the 19th.
I think that's fine, we can certainly, you know, give a little, just a little bit of background, but I just think ratifying it when it's on the agenda, to make sure we're...
Yeah, we will do that.
...hunky-dory.
All right. Next item tonight is the treasures report. Mr. Fisk.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill.
How are you, Bill?
I believe you have either electronically or in paper various reports that we've produced. The first one I'd like to call your attention to is the 12-month, period 12, budget status report for the general fund. What this report does is compare our actual results for the fiscal year ending June 30 with the budget. The only comment I'd make there is we still may have some additional transactions coming in. Invoices seem to find their way in here for a while after the end of the fiscal year. So, there may be some, hopefully, minor changes in this, but I hope by next month, we'll have this in final form for you. Basically, we have ended the year with an excess of revenues over expenses of approximately $59,000, which is more than we had budgeted. We'll have an increase in our fund balance by that amount. The principal reasons for that are, if you go down through this report, you can see the major categories. Our tax revenue was a bit over budget because of collecting, collecting delinquent taxes and the interest on delinquent taxes. Those amounts are more than we had planned for, and so we have about a 2% addition in taxes over the budget. In our intergovernmental revenues, the railway tax, the state pilot program, Vermont Highway Aid pilot programs, we are at about $213,000 compared to a budget of $196,000. So, we're about $109,000 over budget in that category. And on the revenue side, over budget's a good thing. Charges for services, you can see them depicted there, we are a little bit over about $750 over budget in revenue in that category, with the exception of the pay-as-you-thrown revenue, which is a little below budget. Everything else, brush fees, access permits, hazardous waste income, and zoning and building permits are all over budget. Licenses, a small item, but still over budget, about $700 over budget. Fines are slightly below budget. Sheriff fines are the principal part of that, they are almost on budget, about $36 short. Our dog fines are twice the budgeted amount plus, and where we've, we've got a, less of a result is in the state police fines, they're 426 against a budget of $1,000. Interest income's a little bit over budget. Howard Park, as you can see, if you turn to the next page, is a little bit over budget on the revenue side, and we're looking at the cemetery revenue is a little under budget by a little less than $1,000. Other income, these items here are pretty close to where they should be, it's a miscellaneous, the employee health share is not a miscellaneous category, but the, the other income is, and we are about 80% of budget in that category.
Are we going to see the, I'm trying to think of, well, we've got a zero in the employee disability share.
Well, you...
Because we're doing that as liability on the balance sheet.
Well, what we are doing is we're recognizing, we're not recognizing this as income, and we've had discussions about this, I have a...
So, we're going to have to just note that for budgeting.
Yep, and we will. Operating transfers are, are overall over budget principally because of the fire equipment and the paving transfers in. On the expense side, general government is, and expenses under budget, which again, on the expense side, is a good thing, by about $33,000. And if you look down through the categories, you can see where that's, that appears. Coal Hall, again, slightly under budget, big savings there is in the fuel oil. The town clerk is under budget, and you can see through the various categories in her budget. We get down to accounting and payroll, that's a little, slightly, about $400 over budget in that category. Payroll service accounts for that, or a part of that, anyway. On the auditing side, the auditors have, are under budget favorably, then about $900 under budget. The delinquent tax collectors, FICA expense is over budget because his income is higher because he's collected more in, in delinquent taxes this year. Treasury...
That's an overage that we'll take.
Yeah, right, I mean, it's, you're giving back a little bit of the, what you've collected as a result. On the treasury services, we're slightly under budget. On the listers, we are under budget by about $6,000. So, overall, general government is about $38,000 below budget, which is, as I said, good. Public safety, animal control, about $1,100 under budget. Emergency management, a very small item. Fire department is under budget by about $5,000, slightly less than $5,000. The fire warden, because of the cost of the vehicle, is less than budgeted, budgeted 16, four in total, we're looking at about $8,300 right now. Law enforcement, pretty close to being on budget, a little over, about $300 and so over. Total public safety is under budget, however, by about $15,000. When we get to the public works, highway administration is about $17,000 under budget at this point. Highway construction is about $30,000 over budget. Paving was a big item in that, in this particular year. Highway equipment maintenance, as you can see, if you go onto page 7, is over budget by about $3,000, $3,500. Highway garage, under budget significantly, principally because the professional services weren't spent. The solid waste facility is about $10,000 under budget on the expense side. Streetlights, again, under budget. The park, very close to being on budget, about $200 under budget. The cemetery expenditures, about $200 under budget. So, total public works, combined all those things, is roughly $32,000 under budget. Planning is under budget by about $4,700. However, excuse me, Development Review Board is under by $4,700, planning is, is over by about $700. And so, we have left, so overall, planning and development's under budget by $3,000. Community appropriations are right on, except for those items that were not approved by voters, that accounts for the difference between the two. And again, we've, if we, if the voters approved everything, we'd be right on budget, so we're slightly under with that, about $1,100 under. County tax was just $400 less than we had, we had, excuse me, less than we had budgeted, that's correct. Debt service expenditures are pretty close, we're a little over, and the issue there was, we discussed this last time, I believe, and it was the, principally on the fire truck accounted for a big portion of that. Transfers to reserves are right on budget. So, overall, you know, we've had a positive result. We had planned to spin down some of our fund balance, about $124,000 of it, and in fact, what we did is add $59,000 to the fund balance at this point in time. Okay, and I say that because we may, and we may get some more invoices, and we adjust these numbers. I hope by the end of this month, we'll have, next year's September meeting, we'll have good numbers for the fiscal year. If you, next turn to the, any questions on that? I'm talking away here. If you next turn to the balance sheet, which you should have, for the general fund, as of June 30th. As soon as I find my copy of it, which I know I have here somewhere. You can see from the balance sheet that we have a pretty substantial, thank you, a pretty substantial cash balance as of the, as of the end of the fiscal year. We ended the year with about $398,000 in cash. Now, our cash position today, I will hasten to tell you, is about $200,000, because we always have major expenses for debt service in the first two months of the year, and I expect that before the end of August, we will be drawing on our line of credit at some point during, during August. The other major items on the balance sheet are an item called prepaid expenses, about $109,000. That item represents charges, things that we have recorded but relate to the new fiscal year, so we effectively defer them, and the term for deferring them is their prepaid expenses. There's several items that make that number up. We also have some amounts due to us that are called accounts receivable, and the big receivable we have are delinquent taxes. At June 30th, we had $101,000 in delinquent taxes. Our delinquent tax position right now is in the low $80,000 figure, so that number's come down. The other item on the asset side are the inter-fund balances. We, we have obligations between funds, and we recognize those, and one case is a receivable, and the other case is a payable on the other fund. On the liability side, we have accrued payroll. We have some miscellaneous payroll withholding items, we have about $185,000 in accounts payable. We've, we have what is known as deferred revenue. That $39,300 represents the amount of taxes that will not be available soon enough for us to use in our cash flow. I mean, it's, it's an accounting rule that we have to follow, that we can only recognize revenues to the extent we're going to be having available suspendable funds within general rules 60 days, so this offsets that a bit and brings that number down. The other deferred revenue, the $4,400, represents the access permits, they were sold before the beginning of the fiscal year, they are now in revenue for this fiscal year. And then the other item is an amount that has to be paid to the trustees of public funds for the, the cemetery perpetual funds that were collected during the year and will be remitted into the, into the trustee's keeping. So, overall, as I said before, we've had a fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year of $383,000 in round numbers.
That's nice.
It's very nice. It is very nice. You know, we're trying to, we talk, we have several discussions about managing that number and trying to, to move it down a bit, and this year's budgeting process incorporates a reduction in that fund balance as well.
How much did we apply towards this year's budget?
$120,000.
$120,000.
So, if everything was on track this year, we would have $120,000 less in the ending fund balance.
And instead, we have $59,000.
No, that, okay, yes, essentially, yes, yeah. We used $124 for this fiscal year, we're talking about the 14 fiscal...
Right, so we'd have $260-some.
Something like that, yeah.
And are you comfortable with that number?
I am reasonably comfortable with it, I think, you know, I'm kind of a, I'm more fiscally conservative on the one hand, and I like to see a big, a big cushion. On the other hand, this, this, these are funds that were gained through taxes, it's taxpayers' money, and it represents a means of having a positive effect on the tax rate if we spin down some of the fund balance. I think we have to look at it... I think we have to look at it each year and decide what the appropriate number is, I don't think there's a, a number we can pick and go forward forever with it. But generally, I'm comfortable with the number, yes. There are also, of course, now I find my balance sheet, here you go, thank you. There's also a set of balance sheets and activity statements for all of the, all of the funds of the town that are included in your package. These run through the, the non-general fund accounts, everything for fire equipment, through the equipment replacement fund, you know, we have several, for the new board members, we do have several funds that are either designated by the board or set aside by the terms of grant agreements to, to be separately accounted for, if you will, and that's the purpose of these. We also have a water, the water department in this group as well.
Bill, can I ask a question about, are these, have the, I'm looking specifically at the municipal grant funds, and the one that stands out, I'm just wondering if these have already, all been expenses applied to them, because I'm looking, for instance, at the two-fiftieth anniversary fund, and-
At the asset account, or?
Well, I'm looking at, yes, and, and just knowing, you know, all of those bills, I was pretty involved in that, I thought we pretty much zeroed out that fund.
That is, I believe, correct, from what you're saying, the cash is still sitting in this designation, and really should be cleared up. One of the projects I'm, I'm working with Nimrik on right now is to take this three-ten account municipal grants and divide it into two separate funds, one of which represents funds that are really designated funds of the town, and the other which are, are restricted, funds restricted by some outside organization, for example, grantors. And, just to, to make the accounting a little easier, we do have, we do have inter-fund balances between this, this three-ten account and the general fund. If you look, there's a liability for eighty-two hundred dollars in there-
Right, and I wondered if that was-
Which are funds, that's right, and these things have to be adjusted. This is a, you know, I reduced this considerably this year, but it's, it's a moving target, every, every time we have a transaction, something else goes through this account, and we have to continuously adjust it. And it's something I could certainly look at before we get to the final financial statements.
Well, we have, if you look at the income and expense report, just behind it, Karen, on page eight-
Oh, wait a second.
The two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary expense is forty-five ninety.
Okay, so that hasn't been, so maybe that's as part of that eighty-two fifty-seven.
That's exactly what it is, yeah.
Got it, okay, okay. Okay, that answers my question.
And-
Aki-doke.
Any other questions? Mitch, Ken, questions? I do not have financials for July at this point. July is, is really an interesting month, we spend a lot of money and take very little in, so you wouldn't see anything, you wouldn't see anything really interesting, and you really have to see July and August together when we get all the, the debt service payments made, to really have a sense of where it's, where it's coming out. And as I said, we'll be into the line of credit before the end of August.
And then, the end of August is the, statutorily, basically, the end of receipts that we get in through the end of August that are conceivably for work or services or product that we purchased prior to June thirtieth, those all will be accounted for stuff through, in the two-thousand-and-thirteen fiscal year. But then, anything that comes in after that, we account for going forward. So, we close the book, so to speak, at, after the end of August.
Yes, effectively, that is true, for, with respect to receivables, that's absolutely true. And that rule is a little different for expenses, but for receivables, it's a sixty-day rule. Anything else? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer, Chris, we appreciate your-
Thank you, Bill, very much.
You're welcome. We appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Next, we have the road forming on deck. How are you, sir? Good.
So, bring us up to speed on some of the recent goings-on, maybe some of the project statuses, some of the bigger projects, what you got coming up, some of the stuff that you've dealt with in the last couple of weeks. I know that we had quite an extensive monsoon season that we muddied through, no pun intended, and I think we're able, with a little bit of better weather, we've been able to overcome some of the things we couldn't over for a few weeks, so I could tell us what's going on.
We've pretty well graded everything, we're regrading some things now that water has brought potholes out again. Unfortunately, the new grader, ten-thirty this morning, decided to quit right in the middle of the road on us. It's a relay of some sort, I guess, they got it, our tracks got it running, got it offside of the road, we got cones around it.
Where's that right now?
Where is it?
Peter's flats. Seven-thirty tomorrow morning is supposedly the parts gonna be in, so I pulled Dave off the mower, he went with the cat to finish up what Tim was doing with the John Deere. Today was a pretty messed-up day, but we still accomplished. We've done a big ditch out on Mead Road, it was washing the road out with all the rain we've had this year. We've lined it with a stone, a four-six inch stone, see if it works. We got, I thought I'd have finished it today, we got about fifty more feet of about, it's better than a, probably at least a quarter mile ditch, it's, it's long. And we put about two foot of buffer back against the road, so the road's not washing out again. And we cleaned the other side up, also over there.
Is that where we cut, where you cut some, there's some trees in brush on the backside of the ditching, or?
Yes, that's where Tiffany wrote that he liked how we cleaned the brush out, I did that so I could go out now and fix the ditch.
Okay.
We cleaned all the brush out, so we can fix the ditch now. Had a culvert that was bought quite a while back, that we just went and put up by Karen's, and in tail to do that, we had to ditch all the way down the side of the road so the culvert would work.
Where was that?
Jenks, Charlie Jenks.
Oh, for their new drive.
Yes, they sold the land, and they had purchased the culvert a while back, and for the sale to go through, the culvert had to be put in.
I see.
So, we ended up ditching down the road there to make that work, and everything has been raked, everything has been chlorided, there should be no complaints in that department. And like I said, we've pretty much ninety-five percent covered the whole town, and now we're going back to touch up what the couple rains have got us in the last week or so got us a little bit. And we're gonna go on to the capital improvements shortly, I hope, like, next week.
Okay, I have a question. Actually, it's more a point, I think, of clarification, because it's come up, and we do get, Terry and Margie do get questions regarding chloride, and how it's applica-, how it's applied. It's been communicated to me that there are, some people in the community think that every time the road is graded, it's chlorided. I wanted to, while we were on camera, dispel that myth, that is definitely not the case. Quite frankly, our, our, our budget doesn't allow for that, is the primary reason that doesn't. Chloride, the chloride stuff that we use, which is a dust control agent, but more importantly, actually helps to keep the road materials-
The fines.
The fines in the road, instead of turning to dust and blowing away.
Right. If you did the math, though, for the amount of money that we put into a chloride budget, you could not quite do every one of our roads one time for the budget. At second gear, putting on a good coat of chloride on the road.
All right, so, I just wanted to dispel the myth that there is, that chloriding is done every time the roads are graded, and, and that if it's not being done, that there's some shortcoming, it is not the case. We have, that's something that we discuss at length every year, and have for as long as I've been involved with the board. If the budget allowed, we probably would do, we would try to allow more for it, so we try to balance that with the other needs of the town. But, again, I just wanted to make that point on camera, that that is, that is not part of the standard process for every time the roads are touched. So, go ahead, Terry, you can continue.
Well, we did three driveways, the ones we paid a visit to on Poochel Hill, we did put blacktop into their driveways, rounded it out with a roller, took our time, I thought it'd come out pretty good. It was, I think we went through the numbers, I believe, it was three, got three men, about four hours, and about, I think we spent two hundred and twenty dollars of blacktop doing it, for them three driveways, which we got about a hundred feet done, so.
How are those holding up? That was near the end of the rain, but they seem to be working as-
We do have a couple other people that are concerned, that one rainstorm we had, according to local meters, it was two and a half inches of rain, less than an hour, which took out a couple other driveways, and I don't know if we wanna just keep going with a few at a time, and knock 'em off, or?
You know, I would wait, because remember, we had said we were gonna contact an engineer, and not that the engineer's gonna tell us anything we don't already know, it just was to kind of reaffirm maybe our direction. And I've got at least one local standing by any time next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, to meet, so we can talk more about that.
Okay.
And then, we may know whether to just keep rolling ahead in that direction or not.
Okay.
No pun intended, rolling ahead.
Rolling ahead.
And the dozer is in the garage, all apart, Steve's got it apart, and we're fixing the undergear of it to go back to work on cider mill.
What are you doing to that, Terry, is it, gotta change the tracks, or?
No, the big springs that hold the springs out, the tension out snapped in two different-
On the front idlers, the front wheel.
Both springs snapped in two different spots, and happened to-
You don't need to do any track work, then?
No.
Oh, God, I seen it ran over there, and I gave Margie a place really reasonable.
Actually, I got, I, the spring's pretty cheap, I got all the shims and everything, I just gotta find the, the holder, now it stripped the holder, but I got the springs earning for a little over six hundred dollars, and all the retainers and-
That's a nine-seventy-seven, right?
Yes.
Did you get over to Leclerc Road on that hill, the big hill?
Uh, we, we just did it, and-
By Carl's.
And we haven't redone it, no.
It's gotta be us bad, man.
Yeah, our horse trailer went up it right after we did it, before we even had chloride down.
Washboard.
Yep, uh, Timmy was on his way there when he got done with Bozil, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah.
Grader sat in the middle of the road all day, with him standing there trying to stop traffic.
That's a, most anything that come along, if you had a collision, it would lose for that.
I thought we could put the army truck on it and pull it, but it doesn't work that way, that locks right up tighter and tight when it shuts off, all six wheels.
Yeah.
Wow. Helicopter.
So, it, so just in, like I say, electronic control, electronic relay, you said?
Well, it's, you just got flashing, you must put it in park before you put it in reverse. And it's in park, and you could see, in park, the big dash kept saying, must put in park before you put in reverse, and it shut the engine right off and everything, just boom.
So, our other grader is still on the road?
Days, I could've been spending a lot-
It's not been always the best, is it?
Yeah, not always.
So, Terry, we didn't get our financing packet today to sign, so that pushes that out for more days.
Are we told that it's imminent, correct?
Well, it's imminent, she said, oh, yeah, sure, by, by Thursday. By Thursday, so that if we warn a special meeting on Thursday, we could maybe get people checks by next, early next week to midweek, and that, that's one of the pictures that I painted for Foster Motors, say I don't have any miles down yet.
Yeah, holding the truck, I'm gonna get it for you, yeah, we'll get that for you.
I hope they don't have two thousand miles of test drives on it. Yeah, we'll show you one, try this and that one.
Okay. Um, what, so what are, just briefly, what are some of the capital improver projects we're looking to begin on, now that we're kind of catching up on some of the standard needs?
I was gonna scrape off Shasprey Hollow Road first, and remove about four to five inches of that powdery gravel by Al Kings, and put the fabric down, and then reapply the new gravel in that section, it turns to a mud hole every year. That was gonna be our first one we were gonna tackle.
And what else is on the agenda, there's some work on West Mountain?
West Mountain.
Yeah, for tree work, yeah, we've got, we've gotta get a bid for cutting the trees, 'cause they're all right next to wires, on that real shady area where there's no ditch and the water runs right down off the mountain, just down from Al's house.
So, those are the, the two, basically, the first two on the agenda, trying to-
Well, no, the, the second one I wanted to do was West Mountain Road up by Fritz Ludwig's there through the swamp. I wanna get that new culvert in there and put the fabric through there, and see if we can stop that from turning into a mud hole every year.
Is that, that was in the budget for this year?
Yes. Well, we're, we're going to take the bank run off of cider mill and use that as a base on West Mountain Road, so we didn't have to pay for it, and then put the fabric down, so. I think you're going to that, so it helps cider mill out.
Yeah. So, so getting the cat repaired, the one that's in the drives-
I needed the excavator to do that, to load the trucks up there to haul it there, and then the grader will spread it there, 'cause bank on the gravel's only that big, it's small stuff.
Right, so.
Are you putting French drains in any of these places worth going to mow, Terry?
I tried the first one last year right up by Daley's Pit, and it seemed to work pretty good, except for the whole bank is a slush hole, there, you probably can see where I put the big rocks up against the bank. It just keeps, it's a real fine ochre silt almost coming out of the bank, but instead of a culvert there, I put a French drain in there, wrapped it in fabric and large stone, four to six inch stone, and it's, this year, it didn't turn to mush, but this was a pretty soft year, I mean.
A lot of times, that French drain should do wonders for you.
I just worried it'd plug up with the fine stuff, that's what I was concerned with.
But it, so far, so good, though.
So far, so good. That was the first one we've tried, though.
Well, but I mean, most times you put that fabric in there, and it makes a line around the outside.
We have a spring right in the middle of Daniels Road up on the corner, we wanna try another one there.
Yeah.
We wanna go all the way across the road with a French drain right there.
They'll do, save you a lot of work.
Yeah.
And how's the mowing coming along?
Um, well, did all of East Road last week, Holy Smoke Road, started on Trumbull Hill, and Dave got half of that done, he was going back there today until I, he was out of his way when I called him, said go back and get the grader, and, so, Steve's on vacation this week, so I've only got one guy for the mower, Steve and Dave, take turns on the mower. But I do run it every day, that's my first priority. But I sort of had to leave Tim there with the grader, 'cause it was right in the middle of the road, so I sort of lost the guy for today, he was like a flagger.
What's a French drain, is that where you ditch it and put big rocks in instead of a culvert or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Wrap it in fabric, so the dirt doesn't go in there, but you can't do much about at the end, the end can still get plugged up with fines.
Input, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just, just wanted to make sure.
And so, and, and back to the mowing, everything, the, the west side has been completed, or?
Well, I would say completed, White Creek Road, all the way, all the way, Granger, Mead Road, all of Avondale, Eleanor's Way, yes, eighty percent of that side's done. This side is where we were trying to work north now, to complete this side. I guess we're a little bit behind, but I didn't think we're that bad, 'cause usually we didn't, they didn't do our roads before till June fifteen, so we're just a little bit behind.
Anything else for Terry?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Tell the guys, appreciate them, we got, the weather's cooperating, we're back in the saddle.
They, they're not getting back here much before five, five fifteen, they're, they've been humping pretty good. No.
Be out of town. Yeah, take care Terry. All right, next one, we already hit on briefly, the master lease agreements for related to the highway equipment purchases, which Margie will tell us where we stand and what we're doing here.
Well, we just are waiting, the bank was in the 11th hour of credit approval. And the glitch is always that we don't have audited financials, but after Bill sent them a letter and after our vendor, our financing company convinced the bank, this is not required by law in Vermont annually, however it is best practice. They think that the financing will go through. And now it's just a question of getting the documents, she was hoping to have had them down here by four to five this afternoon. So, my guess is that we see them tomorrow with a anticipated special meeting, I need at least a forum. I'm thinking Thursday.
I'm afraid I won't be.
And you won't be here either.
Early?
I'll be out of town.
Okay.
Early, like five-ish?
If it's Thursday, it has to be.
Well, we have a breakfast meeting.
Oh, breakfast meeting?
We do it first thing in the morning.
I could do a breakfast meeting because aren't we supposed to do something with Tam, I mean, I have to be.
Tam is on Tuesday, Wednesday the 7th.
Oh, did we switch it to the Wednesday that's?
Wednesday the 7th, 2:00.
Yeah, I could do a very early Thursday morning, but.
You're cutting back.
Yeah.
Yep.
Me too.
Yeah, it's very hard.
So.
If worse comes to worse, you're going to have to take action.
Monday.
The following week.
Yeah.
Bill will have to guide you through it. Yep.
That can be available, I think, for any time you need.
Okay.
Ken, could you meet Thursday morning early if need be?
Yep.
Okay.
What's your?
Carl will be back.
Like, well, eight o'clock?
Well, that's late, we don't know.
Yeah. That's early for me, you know.
Oh, okay, well, you know, we hear that rooster.
I will let you know.
Yeah, yeah, that rooster, that rooster, I know, you're poking him, right?
Once you see daylight, that's it.
Okay. All right, the next thing up we have is, we have two BCA decisions that are being appealed to the state, or appealed. The BCA met on matters related to taxes for two properties. The BCA's decisions were appealed to the state and we have stipulations that have returned that we need to review and either approve or not.
Now, did you see Judy's cheat, sheet, her explanation of the process? And so the, Peter Cross, I don't have my notes here. I think the sum of his original assessments was around 260,000 and now he's down to 135,000. And after all the negotiations on the Doris Biggert Lemieux camp, where we started at 71,500 and they all came in and negotiated it to 58,100. $58,100.
So basically, these are the summation of the agreement, so all parties are in agreement on these now?
Yes, that's why you have, it's an interesting role for you administratively to accept the stipulations. The question that I have is, and the listers aren't here, is that what happens if the board says no?
And.
I don't, then you don't have, you have not accepted the assessment.
Right, I, I'm going to vote against it. I mean, I was a part of this and I think that some of those valuations are. In fact, the original, when the BCA, because I was on the BCA, I was involved in some of this. The listers actually initially, on first appeal, did make adjustments. And then the BCA chose to support the listers' adjustments that were once again being appealed. And, you know, one of those two, you know, I saw personally, we reviewed it, we researched it. And I cannot support those valuations personally.
So you want to do it one at a time?
I don't know how we do this.
Well, let me just, and just to make sure that we, that we have it clear, can you go through just briefly the process again, just, I mean, again, not so much, just the, the big picture process?
Here's the big picture, okay. So you have, you can appeal your assessment first to the listers. If you're dissatisfied, you can appeal to the Board of Civil Authority. And that's, at that point, members of the BCA will, three, have to inspect the property and report back and the determination is issued. If you're still dissatisfied, you appeal to the, she's written State Supreme Court. This is all on 32, Title 32. And that's the final step in the appeal process. When appeal is taken to court or the state appraiser, the appraisal established by that process shall become, shall become the basis for the grand list of the taxpayer for the year in which the appeal is taken and if the appraisal relates to real property for the next ensuing years. Except that if the real property, da-da-da, the appraisal however may be changed in the ensuing two years if the taxpayer's property's materially altered. Changed, damaged, or if that city undergoes a complete revaluation. So it says, shall become the basis for the grand list of the taxpayer.
So that's basically, I mean, that's, they're telling us, the state is telling us, this is what it will be for that year 2012.
And, and until it's otherwise adjusted according to these terms, basically.
Right, although the town does have, I mean, I know one particular, in particular, one of the properties in question. And it was one of the things the homeowner was declaring was that the percentage of the property being completed was whatever they were determining, 75% and the town was determining it was more than that. In any case, there was continuing building that was being done on that property after the appeal. And so I would think that that particular property, the listers certainly would have every right to go in because there were material changes made within this ensuing two years or whatever it was that you just read. But, I mean, the way I read that, the town basically, I don't know if they're looking for us to approve it or acknowledge that we received it because from what I'm hearing, the state is saying, or the Supreme Court or whomever it is, is saying, this is what it will be.
That's as I understand it is, is that same thing, is that it's appealed to the highest level and this is what the.
Yeah, shall become the basis for the grand list.
The parties, at this point, there's no more litigation on it. Basically, the parties have agreed reluctantly or otherwise that these are the new values that will be used for the grand list.
Are these lots, developed lots, they have, you said partial buildings or?
No, one of the, the Lemieux.
Biggert and Lemieux.
Biggert is a, is a home or a camp. It's going up in the forest and rec zone. The others are properties that are not developed at this point, the other individuals.
You don't know how big they are though, we don't know.
I did, you know, a year and a half ago. I don't remember now.
Barry has a question.
Right, a question?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there any, are there numbers for what was established at each step of the appeal?
Not in these documents, no. That is in the paper trail that's otherwise available to look into, but.
We don't know, for example, if when the listers, when the individuals grieved initially, that the listers maybe dropped, you know, the valuation of certain percent and then.
Right.
The BCA held it there or dropped it more or raised it up and then what the Supreme Court, I mean, that would be of interest.
I, I know in one case, again, the one that I was on the inspection committee, the listers did drop it. They did drop the initial appraisal based on the initial appeal. The homeowner didn't think that that was low enough and so that person came before the BCA. The BCA did support the listers' second or, or first, we'll say, adjustment. And the BCA supported that.
And then did the Supreme Court?
I'm, it's looking to me, no, the Supreme Court lowered it to, in my recollection, is what the homeowner wanted.
Oh, so they did lower.
Or the state, both of these went to the state, they appealed to the state.
If they appealed to the state.
Yeah, because they brought it down even lower.
Yeah.
It's about 50% is what we assessed it for.
Yes.
So the bottom line is, is that they went through the, as it works out, the property owners grieved us through the appropriate channels and basically where we're at now is the point, they went through the channels here locally and then they pursued it on further and the state has ruled that, that these are the new numbers that we need to use.
If that's, I mean, that's what I'm, you're saying, shall, and, you know, unless we had a lawyer here saying there was anything different that we could do, but. So, you know, again, I, I don't know what we need to do.
I think, basically, yeah, we need.
Motion or rest knowledge, receipt of the state.
Basically, no, these were.
You'd need a motion to accept.
Yeah, we need.
Valuations set forth.
Right.
As stipulated.
So what, how about if I do this, I'll present these, I'm going to read the document as stated and then I'll have, ask for a motion to approve. I'll do them one at a time. So the first one is, the appellant is Doris Biggert and Michael Lemieux. The appellate is the town of Shasbury, parcel number 1102262, tax appeal PVR 2012-39. The stipulation reads, now comes Doris Biggert and Michael Lemieux, the appellant and the town of Shasbury, and they hereby stipulate as follows. The fair market and grand list value of Zero Old Gill Road, as it's described, in the town of Shasbury shall be $58,100. Any and all other claims shall be dismissed with prejudice. Dated at Shasbury, Vermont, this 18th day of June 2013, and it is signed by the appellant.
I have a quick question and you may not know the answer to this, nobody may know it. Was this, was there a hearing at which our listers could have or should have been present?
They were, they met here.
They were.
Mike, this, this thing is a result of that.
Yes, yes, the state appraiser, Mike Bernhardt, was here. And so was Jim Boyle, our listers, the parties appealing.
And so, this stipulation, basically, this is the result of that meeting. So, that being said, we are being asked to basically, I guess, ratify it, sign off on it. As I understand this, this is more, I, I'm, as I understand this, this is basically, we need to officially make it, officially sign off on it, but I don't think we really have an option. Because the parties of all, including the state, have come and said this is what it's going to be.
Yeah, I kind of feel that way too, I mean, why is it even in front of us?
Because ultimately, we're the ones that have to, we're the tax collecting authority here, so they're just telling us how much we get to collect on.
You have to, you have to approve every error and omissions of the grand list.
Right, this is basically an amendment to the grand list, is really what it amounts to.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah.
So with that being said, I would ask for a motion to approve the stipulation as read.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Mitch just did, you have a second.
Okay, did I, that was second, is there any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor of approving the stipulation as read.
For the final grand list value.
For the final grand list value of $58,100, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Show the record that it was a vote three, four, one against and note the, as we do on the board, note the parties approving and dissenting. Thanks Sean. All right, I'm going to, I will sign this on behalf of the town, correct Margie? So. All right, the second stipulation is, the appellant is Peter Cross, Peter K. Cross, the appellate is Shas, the town of Shasbury. Parcel 152013, formerly parcels 152013, 152013.1 and 152013.2. This is in reference to tax appeal PVR 2012-40, 41 and 42. Stipulation reads as follows, now comes Peter Cross, the appellant, and the town of Shasbury, and they hereby stipulate as follows. The fair market and grand list value of Zero Glastonbury Drive in the town of Shasbury shall be $135,600. Any and all other claims shall be dismissed with prejudice. Excuse me, dated at Shasbury, Vermont, the 20th day of June 2013, signed by the appellant Peter Cross and Paula Cross. I have a motion for approval of the stipulation as read. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
I'll ask again, these are just plain blank lots, nothing on them.
This is, this is a lot, yes.
Yeah, they're up off of Glastonview Drive, yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? There being none, all is in favor of approving the stipulation as read and with the valuation to be adjusted to $135,600, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries for zero. Okay, while I sign this, Margie, if you want to lead us a little bit on discussion, healthcare reform, what we know new or what we're, where we're at today?
We don't know a lot more new, except I personally, well, I've been trying to see if the, I think the league is still. We've got vacation schedules and I think they're trying to figure out how to do more outreach to people. Because now we have all the navigators being trained regionally and so I think the league, what I understand, is there for our particular questions that are municipal and focus, but that we can also gain a lot of understanding through the navigators locally. I think, I did actually catch a very good discussion Friday night, it was on VPR. The town would, any employer's going to have to figure out to what degree to subsidize fully or in part, or not subsidize or rather, the way we've done over the years, the level of healthcare that we're going to choose. We have a choice of four plans, it's the same for everybody, benefits are the same among all plans. What's different is if you are going, if you consume medical services, you may want a richer, a higher premium. It's really the question of how, who pays first dollar. You know, are you going to be paying it upfront in premium dollars and then you have very few co-pays and whatever. So it's really, if you want a high deductible plan, because you don't think you're going to consume that much, you pay as you go with your co, your co-share's going to be, co-pay's will be higher. And it's, I think, pretty much in keeping with the former IRS laws, the high deductible plans remain the only plans compatible with health savings accounts or health reimbursement accounts. accounts. And there is a plan, I don't remember exactly which level it was, that is very similar to what we currently offer. So, but, this, the employee, employer relationship changes because we, including me, get to shop on the exchange, we get to consider all plans, even though an employer might decide to subsidize or provide assistance, financial assistance based on a plan. And, and so what will happen, as I gather, is that by the end of October, at some point, after employees get to finish shopping, we have the month of October, in November, there's, or certainly by December first, you will, the exchange will report back to you, the employer, what employee's chosen what plan, so you know. So, I still think the, the, it's almost, I think the onus is on the employee, to figure out whether it's more beneficial to receive financial assistance from the employer versus tax credits. And the website's set up now with all kinds of calculators, I've been out on it, exploring. It's gonna be tough for people that feel somewhat cowed, or unsure of their ability to manipulate websites. So, so that's, that's the gist of what I'm getting. There is going to be, I wanted to get a better handle on the assessments, because our, the 2014 assessment, I think there's only the state assessment that we would face, for instance, if there was some reason you did not offer healthcare, that, I think it's $475 per employee in 2014, for those of us that are fewer than 50 employees. But you get, the first four full-time employees are exempt, so that would be a hit of about $2,000 a year. And a lot of businesses are going to decide that's well worth the cost of doing business, they just, they'll pay the fines. Then, in the, the individual mandate on the Affordable Care Act kicks in January 1st, 14, and it's going to be the assessment at the individual level is $95 an individual. And I think that's where people.
I mean, if they don't carry the insurance, that's the penalty, basically.
That's gonna be the penalty.
Those escalate.
For a year. And then those escalate, for sure.
The first year, it's reasonably inexpensive, I think, on both sides, both for the.
Definitely.
But I think those numbers go up really steeply in subsequent years.
So, Margie, do we have any cost?
We have the plans.
For these, for these various four plans?
Yeah, the plans are all out, all the costs are available.
And how comparable are they?
Well, I haven't done any of that analysis yet.
You haven't, yeah.
I just wanted to see.
Is this with these navigators?
No, it's right on the website.
But, but what do the navigators?
The navigators, I have to find out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering if we have employees that feel somewhat challenged in terms of the details around this.
Yeah, it's our responsibility to direct them.
It is, okay.
To, places, so that's, that's what I need to research. But I can, I can see some, you know, some deliberations that are needed. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be terribly different than what we've been doing in the past, comparing plans.
Right.
Taking a look at, I know the rate of subsidy right now, that are, we're subsidizing to the tune of about $32,000 a year. And, $32,000, sorry, a month, is that right? These were month, these were monthly premiums.
No, we're not spending.
No, $32,000 years.
Well, this is a year, hold on, anyway, there's a calculator that helps us through this, and we know what we've budgeted, so you just, you, you run with the census that we've got, the makeup of the plans, and.
Now, it, it, do I recall correctly that it's MVP and Vermont Blue Cross are the only two companies?
They're the only two. It's basically a private insurance, choice of private insurance.
So, if we're looking at those two companies, and each one of them will put forward four plans?
They have plans.
Four tiers.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, yeah, the four tiers, the plans, and they're all the same.
The plan, a Blue Cross plan and an MVP plan will be exactly the same?
The benefits have to be the same.
So, in terms of authorizations and all of that, it will all be the same?
The core benefits have to be the same, and this is where we start to learn about all the nuances in co-pays, and if they want to add on, you may have Vision, you may have various riders, you may.
So, that's where these two companies could be different?
Could be. Then I noticed, when I saw the big spreadsheet, that we've got standard plans and non-standard plans, and I find no help, I have to find out what that is.
Right, okay.
So, there are over 20 plans to sit and take a look at.
Okay, okay. I'd be interested in, you know, putting down with some of those two of you.
So.
Okay, I understand them.
Yeah, so, I don't know what the board would like to do, I, I just need to keep researching, because I need to get some of this information to employees and to you, as much as I, I know, and then still work on the idea of a, some sort of presentation that we can go, come, it can come here from somebody, if it's not gonna be Dave Sickle. I did just get a mailing from Blue Cross Blue Shield itself about a 7:30 breakfast meeting to go over what they are doing. They're gonna be doing a presentation and discussion about their offerings now, and it's, I think we should all go.
When is that, Margie?
When is it?
The Equinox, 7:30 to 9:00 AM, it's this Friday morning.
This Friday?
Mm-hmm. August 9th, August 9th.
I have to look at my calendar, I might be able to go.
At the Equinox.
If you could, I will be.
I was just trying to go, there was one on, there was one at Mount Anthony, too, I got the Chamber of Commerce notice.
See, I think the Chamber might be a navigator.
Yeah.
And that.
So, this is up there in, yeah, I'll check my calendar, but at 7:30, I'll be up, I'll go if I can get back by nine.
Good, Mitch, so I'll look for you.
Mitch, on your way. If you're, if you can go, it's right on your way.
Oh, it's perfect. Yeah, so, that's, that's where I am. Trying to wade through all this.
So, maybe.
We need to start setting some deadlines for ourselves about when we would like to be, at what point.
Well, why don't we do, is, would it be appropriate to have some feedback, if Mitch, if you could, because Margie won't be with us at our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
If you could, if you could just report back on your findings, maybe the two of you touched base, put some notes together, and if you could report back to us at our next meeting, and then from there, we can start laying out the timeline, too.
I don't think I have anything before nine o'clock on Friday, or nine thirty, so I don't think there'll be an issue.
I mean, we really should, if employees are having to make these choices in the month of October.
We need to.
By our second, by our second week of meeting in September, we really have to have nailed some of this.
Down, yeah.
And I'm gonna start educating them.
So, anything else on that topic for the moment, then, Margie?
No.
Okay. Thank you for continuing to keep us updated.
I mean, I just listen for everything that I can hear and read.
Town Crouch status, Mark or Karen, Ken, what do you have for us?
She, go ahead, ladies first.
All right, all right, jump in at any moment. So, at our last meeting, I think I had mentioned to the board, Ken and I had mentioned that the committee had, well, we had arranged to have, speak with another engineer, essentially, you know, people wanting to get second opinions on, on the first analysis, cost analysis we had had done, and, and so we spoke with, via phone, we, Margie had sent up a lot of information, the schematics, the, the cost estimates, not just around the building, but around the site development, and we sent them up to a fellow who, the, the original facilities committee and the board had first interviewed when we were looking at engineers. And this was cross-engineering up north, and he was very gracious in looking at the material. One of the reasons that we were seeking some guidance from him is that he's just completed two buildings up north, similar structures, town garage facilities that included some site work, included salt shed buildings. So, anyway, we, we got all the information to him, we had a conference call, and basically what came out of it was him saying that, you know, these, one of the things that engineers do, and he said, he does the same thing, is look at a conservative estimate for these kinds of projects. And in analyzing the way the original estimates were put together, he said, I probably would have done something very similar. So, you know, what it, what it really, I think, the direction it led the committee in was to say, well, you know, then if the figures really weren't that far off, then the project has to be, which is what we've been doing, sort of scaled back a bit, looking at different materials, trying to consider, frankly, what's the sweet spot in terms of a figure? We know that 1.5 the town didn't support. How, what can we take out of it, how can we realistically get it to a figure, and what it, what might that figure be that gives us what we really have to have? The committee has come to a determination, I believe a consensus, again, Ken, can correct me if I'm wrong, but, that we should have a six-bay garage at least, the maintenance bay is sort of questionable, not so much in terms of the fact that it would be a wonderful piece of the project to have, the garage building, but we're looking at cost. I think the, the board already knows that we had discussed changing the type of structure of the salt shed. We lose some longevity by doing that, we save around $50,000 out of $154,000 initial cost. We're looking at about $100,000 cost in the salt shed. I don't know that there are a lot of cost savings on site work, but again, the initial estimates were estimates, and what we are hoping, we hoped the first time around, and I know that this garage committee certainly is hoping it the second time around, is that bids would come in favorably. We're looking at a wood structure that would allow local contractors to bid on it, the outside material may end up as metal and, you know, but in terms of the actual infrastructure, it would be wood. We're trying to look at roof lines that are uniform, rectangular building, you know, figuring that any nooks and prannies cost money. So, when we got off the phone with this engineer, one of the questions that we were kind of playing around with was, okay, so, where do we go next? If we're looking at a bond vote before the end of the year, and frankly, not wanting to spend a lot more money trying to get us there, we know what we, we need, and we have a schematic drawing now, we have perhaps resources to go to, like these, this town up in Swanton that just finished a very similar building. Are we at the point of going to the townspeople with a figure? Now, the figure that the facilities committee, we, you know, there wasn't full consensus, but the majority seemed to be in the $1 million to $1.1 million range to go out and request that of the town, and frankly, to make it work. We're not, and I say we, meaning the committee, and again, Ken, if I'm getting any of this wrong, jump in, but I think the sense was, we don't, we don't wanna spend another $15,000 perhaps, you know, going out to bid for an engineer that can come up with 20% schematics and, you know, another cost estimate, when we, we feel as though we've gotten to a point where we know what we need. It's a matter of saying to the town, this is the amount of money at this point, we've dropped it by perhaps a half a million dollars, there will be things that we will not get for that, that we would have gotten the first time around, unless the bids come in favorably. And then, if the town supports that amount of money, and this is the way Swanton did it, they didn't spend a lot of money on engineering, they went out to the people and said, this is how much money we're estimating we need to build this building. And then, you put it out there with bid estimate, with bid alternatives. So, you know, you could put a bid alternative for maintenance bay, you know, a bid alternative for whatever it might be.
Didn't, didn't they, as I remember, Karen?
Yeah.
They, they originally were figuring around $900,000 or $1,000, $900,000 or $1 million dollars, the bid came in $800, around $800,000.
Yes, well, no, no, they originally had estimated their building up there at over $900,000.
Yeah, but it came in low.
When it went into bid, when it went out to bid, the bids ranged between 600 and something and 900 and something. And they chose the, I think it was 600 and, I wanna say 630 or 40, and then they had a number of additions to that, they put on a standing seam roof, I forget what, what their little.
They had an apron in front of the building.
That's right, they put an apron on.
Cancree apron.
Feet back, all the way.
So, they had the alternative, basically.
Forty something thousand dollars.
Well, the bid came in low, so they had extra money to do, since they didn't really really figure it out.
Right, good.
Right, exactly.
And they wanted, but they didn't pass it.
And, you know, I went up there and see that building, I really liked it.
Right, well, that, and the committee talked about that, doing a site visit up to, to the Swanton building. But, you know, I think that's, that really was the general sense, is to come to the select board and say, you know, we're, you know, hopefully the town will have trust, I mean, you just don't know. You know, I know Kenny has, you know, I think, gotten a lot of information, he's, he's.
Provided a lot of information.
He's looked for a lot of information, he's brought a lot to the table, he's received a lot, and, you know, some things, I think all of us have looked at it, you know, all different ways now. And the reality is, the town has to understand, when we're talking about a million, a million one, it is not for one building. Just the site work itself is, what was the site work, $130,000, you know, and we're looking at a salt shed, and then you're looking at septic, and you're looking at, you know, all of those infrastructure.
I still think that the town can do, Town Crouch can do a lot of that site work.
Well, we are, that's, the, the site work, that is, there's no question that there's at least 50,000 of town site work built into that.
Yeah, probably the septic system too, Karen.
Well, that may be, Kenny, that may be, but initially, you have to build it in, you know, to the project in a reasonable way, and, and, and hope, again, that your bids come in at a reasonable amount. Now, you know, one of the reasons that we're feeling like we really need to move on this is because everybody reads the paper, they listen to the news, and interest rates are going up. That's going to impact us on a 20-year loan.
Does, indeed.
So.
What are we, a half a point higher than we were?
We're a half a point higher, and, you know, we don't.
The other thing too, Craig, is, by the time we get this voted, you're gonna be November, that's gonna give you a March or April start date for construction.
Right.
That is on our side.
Absolutely.
Right.
Because contractors are gonna wanna start getting work for spring.
Right, exactly.
You're gonna get better bids, I think.
Well, that's, that's, oh, I, I, and he confirmed that, that, you know, if we can be going out to bid in February, lining these things up.
Well, if you go in November, Karen, nobody's gonna do bid that and say, I'm gonna start it right now. to start it right now." You're crazy, because they'll, they'll knock that bid upside.
We wouldn't be ready, anyway. I mean, we would need drawings, we would need something.
Right, but I mean, you just can't, I mean, I do it myself. If I'm going to have to do a job in the work time, I'm going to add a third, just to play with frost.
But we'll be putting it out to bid, you know, the hope was.
Yeah, no, because you put it out to bid, then you go to operate and start in spring.
Right, the weather cooperates.
Right. So, you know, we also talked about strategies for reaching the community. I mean, you know, Barry has had a number of articles in the paper. Some people read the paper, some people don't. You know, I suggested to the committee, maybe we have meetings at the firehouse, or, you know, we have, I, I'm just not sure what the strategy should be. I think, you know, last time around, we sent, I thought, a very informative flyer. Some people read it, some people didn't read it. Some people understood it, some people didn't understand it.
Well, as I'm, as I'm sitting here thinking about this, because it, you know, it sounds like the, we're coming to a point of the committee coming back soon, saying, "All right, based on all of this, this is the number we feel is where we need to go." So, let's, let's just, for sake of discussion, we say that we have that, the committee will present there, have that formally presented, if you will, let's say by September 15th, just for sake of discussion. In my mind, I'm thinking, "All right, if we're looking at some point having a bond vote, we've talked at some point in November, possibly?"
Well, we're thinking that it probably would, because of the timing of how you have to schedule, there'd probably be sometime in early December.
Early December, okay, we'll say December. So, basically, what we have, using that scenario, that we have the committee's recommendation September 15th to an election in December, we then have that period of time to do a pretty extensive, all options education effort, which it could be in print, in the newspaper, it could be, you know, pamphlets and flyers, it can be meetings at various times and places with a, you know, because what that, what happens is, is that over time, you know, again, we, you increase the chances of being able to present the information in a format that everybody can get. People can come, maybe that come to the first one to have questions, that help lead you to then to answer the questions further on, answer them that night, or that day, or in subsequent presentations, you answer the questions that arise.
Right.
But basically, you end up, the sooner we have the recommendation and we lay out the date of when we're planning to have an election, that period of time, the longer that period is, the more opportunity there is for communication. In my mind, I feel that was one of the biggest things that inadvertently we came up short on, because people, obviously, the cost was a concern, but I also, even after, even after the fact, some of the questions and concerns that were raised were on, were things that made, became very obvious, they didn't either understand, or didn't, hadn't heard the information that was available. And, or we didn't present it, let me put it that way. It was our, it was, the onus was on us for not getting it to them either in a format or in a way, or in a timely fashion, so that they comprehended it at the time of the election.
Yeah, I think some of it was the timing. I mean, we were rushing to a March vote, thinking, "If we can get this vote in March and go to bid, you know, as early as, you know, April, the end of April, or whatever, you know, we would be in a really good bid environment, the interest rates were great, and, you know, I mean, it was a, but we learned a lot.
This may be off the wall, I don't know, it just popped into my head, but can you put up a vote for two different, two different numbers, like say, maybe one number, $1 million, another number of $800,000?
The, the answer is, I don't know that you can't, but the discussion has come, here's, here's the thing, the idea behind it is, is that what you end up with when you do that, you end up looking like you don't really know what you.
Right.
What you, what you want to do. Because ultimately, what you, if you, if you come to the plate with a number, the number that is, this is the number that we feel is the appropriate number to get the job done to accomplish X, Y, and Z, whatever that is. That number is different. It was 1.5 million and change the last time.
Yeah.
We've come back, we went back to the drawing board, revisited it, looked at things, found that some things are pretty accurate now. We've scaled back a little bit, the new number is $1 million, for sake of discussion. But, and this is what we see that we're going to get for it. If you come back and do that and say, "Oh, ultimately, $750,000," then it's like, well, what, you don't know what the hell you're talking about.
Well, I'm just thinking of something out there.
Yeah, no, it's.
I do one thing. The other thing is, if you do anything in November or December, that's a special vote, right?
Mm-hmm.
Historically, for anything, I don't care what it is, if you have a special election for a seat, an office seat somewhere, you're not going to get as many people to vote as you would have in a normal election. Is there any reason that we can't wait till March with it?
Yeah.
Well.
We just said, we just said it, we just said it a little while ago, Kenny.
No, I'm just thinking about a special election, you're not going to get so many people there, is all I'm thinking.
They have every right to vote. Anybody can.
I understand that, Karen, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just trying to, because an election is going to cost you, what, how many ex, how many dollars to run an election?
Do those runs, two, three thousand, $2,000? It's, it's not large.
Okay, I, well, I mean, I.
I mean, we're going to save that in interest rates, Kenny.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, that, no, I'm just trying to pick it on the angles, Karen, that's all.
And, and you just said it, you know, in terms of the bid environment, it's much better in the winter.
Yeah, if we could.
To go out to bid.
Well, it's not necessarily, as long as it's in the winter, when the summer starts, that's the, that's what's going to get you your best bid, right there.
Right. Yes, fair.
Couple of things. One, everybody agrees, I think, and we did from the outset, that, that we didn't inform people early enough with the last go-round. So, the sooner we can get people informed now with what the information we have now, the better. Now, Michael Gardner, in his, at the very first meeting of the garage committee, suggested, he was, he was interested in a survey, nailed survey. I'm not sure that's a great idea, but it's still a possibility, but there would be another way to do this.
It's another way to get feedback and information.
And the other way I was thinking of is, is we could put in the paper, and, and also, with my next offering to the paper, we could put, could we put that on the website?
Oh, sure.
Absolutely.
So, so that's another thing we haven't been doing.
We can put all of them on the website, probably tomorrow.
Yeah, we can, we can put, yeah, the original ones could be both.
I think that's a really good idea, Barry.
That might be worthwhile, because some people might be looking at.
They don't get the banner.
Right.
Some people don't get the banner.
And the second thing is, in the article, could we, could we ask people to call or email somebody, Margie, me, whoever, with their concerns or questions? And then, I would really, I would really strongly advise that we do set up some public meetings early, like in the next couple of weeks.
September.
Hopefully, before, and is it, so that's another thing I think we need to do, because then you'll know what's on people's minds if they show up. And isn't November a regular, don't we have regular elections?
Not this year, there's no elections this year.
None?
None. There's no state or federal elections this year in November. That's, and I.
That was why we were a little bit, we were breathing a little easier, we weren't having to shoot for November 4th or 5th.
Right.
We had the deadline.
It's going to be a special election, no matter what.
Right. Regardless, it'll be special. We did, we talked about it the last meeting, you were not able to be there, but we actually talked about the, you know, various presentations, and I think, you know, the committee seemed to feel pretty strongly that it should probably come from the garage committee. You know, last time, we had engineers presenting the information. This is a group of people that frankly, it's a pretty diverse group. Some are former members of the, and current members of the town facility committee, went through it the first time around. Others are people, you know, who had strong feelings for or against the, the old garage plan, and have spent a lot of time, as you well know, you're one of them. And the sense was, you know, those committee members can present what has transpired in the last six months better than anybody to the town. And, and I think frankly, I hope, that there's, that there is a level of trust, because again, it's a pretty diverse group. And, you know, for the group to come to a consensus, at the end of the day, which I hope that we do.
That's a really good sign.
In terms of the number, it's reasonable to ask the town, and, you know, with the full hope that, you know, we get every penny's worth of whatever that amount is, and maybe still even come in under, I mean, just because you go out to bond for $1 million, doesn't mean you're going to bond for $1 million.
Right.
You get, you get what you have to have out of that.
You have to phrase the question very carefully.
Right.
Not to exceed.
Right.
Exactly. And you don't take out any more than what you need to have.
Exactly right.
All right, well, the interest of.
I just want to, right, we're getting work out, you can get an interview on BTM in the morning about 8 o'clock when people go to work.
Yeah.
It can really get a lot of people because of instant radio.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people do listen to the station in the morning, so.
Yeah, we did that the first time around. I'm not sure anybody heard it, but.
Well, maybe it was at 8 o'clock in the evening.
No, it was 8:00 in the morning, I was right there.
All right, well, in the interest of moving our meeting along, what I would, I would ask that you would take back to the committee would be, it sounds, again, it sounds like it's coming to a point near where the committee is going to make some recommendations. I would encourage that as soon as the committee is able and willing to do that, and, you know, when they finalize the decision to bring that back to us, and then.
I don't think the committee knows.
No, I think the one thing, what the committee was requesting, we have a committee, we have a meeting on Wednesday night, this Wednesday, and anyone is welcome to come.
This Wednesday.
Here. This, isn't this the, am I wrong?
DRB meets here.
Oh, wait a minute, no, we're second and fourth, it's not this Wednesday.
Sorry.
Next Wednesday, next Wednesday, here, at 6:30, a week from this coming Wednesday, which I don't know what that date is, but.
14th.
The 14th. But the committee, I think the committee was looking for some direction from the, or some sense from the select board as to whether or not the board would be comfortable with the idea of going before the townspeople with a figure that did not have, had not gone through the process of rebidding for an engineer to come up with a schematic, you know, to present to the people this next time around, sort of a redrawing of what we're talking about. The sense was, let's just, let's, we know what we need fundamentally, let's get the bond vote from the people, and then spend the money to have somebody, this is how much money we have, design it so locals can bid on it, and, you know, these are the things we have to have in it, these could be the alternates, and, and have that be the presentation to the townspeople, as opposed to spending $15,000.
What is, Mitch, your thoughts on that?
Makes sense to me. I think that it's been talked about, everyone's come back to the same numbers, pretty much.
Right, we, we had.
Minus a building, minus a pole barn.
Right, okay.
One thing I thought about, I mean, if they really don't want the, or the maintenance bay, could they designate one of the other six bays as the maintenance bay and storage, if something like that, I mean, that just came to my mind, I was thinking, that could save some money there, but.
Right.
Those are some, you know, those are things that come as part of alternate or, or plans that might come up.
But I think, I, it's necessary, we need it, if we make it through another winter with this one.
Have you got a choice?
Not at this point.
Ken, your thoughts, Steve?
I agree with that pretty much, yeah. I think, I think probably, with hindsight being what it is, that probably the maintenance bay is one of the biggest things to beat it. Because people would say, "Oh, a separate bay for May present time, nothing."
Yeah.
You know?
At least that's a perception, yeah.
It's, it's, you know, it's not right, probably, but that's what people think.
Right, and people don't know what's going on, and, I mean, they're out there now, working on something that, you know, normally, you'd have to, I mean, we're lucky that we have mechanics on this road crew.
Yeah.
Guys that really know what they're doing with this stuff, but.
So, so I guess I take that as a, as a support of this idea, Ken, Karen.
I mean, am I presenting it the way you're understanding, the way the committee was?
More eloquently than I would, probably, much.
I don't know about that.
My, my two cents on that basically mirror my counterparts on the board. The first go-round, we did extensive planning, you know, had plans, did spend the extra money, and based on, again, the follow-up from our local engineer, the commentary that we got from one of the other engineers that bid on it initially, who, as I recall, was in the same ballpark, it wasn't, you know, the first time around as well, and indicated again that he feels that he's, you know, supportive of the plan of attack, I don't see any reason to not proceed in this fashion. You know, we know that, okay, we scaled the building size down a little bit, they can present, and then based on these other topics that we've discussed that Karen presented tonight, and have passed, I don't see any reason not to do that. So, I would say that based on our discussions this evening, there is a consensus on the board, that that would be a good plan of attack, to move forward, for the committee to move forward with that thought process. So, let me rephrase what I said earlier, I would ask that you take that back to the committee, that is, the board does have, is in consensus, that that would be a good plan to move forward with.
Okay. And I would imagine between now and maybe our next board meeting, there will be a site visit to at least one of these other buildings up north, and perhaps, you know, what the committee would do is, you know, present those kinds of photographs, you know.
Absolutely.
This is the kind of building we're looking at, this is how much it costs them, and those kinds of things. Margie, are you comfortable with the way I've tried to?
I would say the only other alternative would be to just ask the incumbent to go back and, and massage the numbers, again, to go back to the, just the shoebox, and with the wood frame and the concrete pad, and see if, then you do get a spreadsheet for whatever use that is. But it doesn't sound like people are in agreement that that's, and that might be about $1,000 or less, $500. So, anyway, but that may not be the answer.
Right, right. So, okay, I think we.
That's it for that?
Know what to do, Ken, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much, both of you, for bringing the information to the table.
Yep.
Margie, what do you have for us? Town administrator's report.
Okay, the transfer station is in the headlines because we are meeting with Tam, Karen is going to join us, because she's been an incumbent liaison, and I think Carl is the other, the liaison, but that, just some site plan changes possibly, and we need to get our used oil collection ironed out again, so we're moving forward to collect it. And I did not get a call from the state. They were down here with, just giving a tour to a new employee, and noticed that we have, hadn't had containers removed, or whatever, and you're supposed to be collecting used oil in a contained situation, so it's something that we really need to deal with.
Right.
However, what I'm struggling with is what we're going to be doing when, I don't know if I can lower the costs of, I had about a $15,000 estimate from safety clean to act, and that was, you know, 18 months ago. That's why I didn't, I said, "We've got to find another way to do this." You have to scrap that tank, or we just leave it there. The problem is, finding out from Ken and others, it's over 20 years in age, and so it is probably time, if it's a single-wall tank, to say goodbye. You can get it pumped, and we could get the, the liquid disposed of for, for about $3,000. I mean, but the, but the, it's that getting that tank cleaned to some degree, and then transported, we thought that, maybe we could just have our guys bring it over to Clean Harbors on a collection day and load it in the back of their truck, because it's never full, and they could dispose of it for us, and that's not.
It's not going to.
not, it's not going to...
Not going to work.
Not going to work.
Fly.
Now, Clean Harbors wrote back and said, that's, it's not going to work, so...
Good, great for us.
But it was going to save on labor, it's, it's, they take, they take waste in barrels, and this is, this is an empty barrel in essence, but because it's PCB waste, they want it handled.
Surly by Rickra. Shouldn't we at least get the liquid out of it?
Yeah, I think...
I mean, if it's $3,000 to get rid of the liquid, I would think we get rid of the liquid.
At least then if it springs a leak, it doesn't run into the ground, exactly.
Exactly, and then we can deal with the container itself. Well, I'm all for that, but we can't resume collection...
Right.
Until, we've got, there are several ideas, and this is what I wanted to talk with, you know, we'll look at the site, the swap shed, we're going to have to be able to collect it, and I was hoping maybe we could get small containment apparatuses, and you just sit 55-gallon drums inside those, and the problem, you know, you end up with a, you need a certain amount of leverage and weight to get up a full drum out of there, so you should always have one that you're using, and then it has to be sealed off while it's tested, you fill up your other one, or we, anyway, that's, so that's, Trevor was great, he came in and sat down, and so we were throwing ideas around.
Who's collecting it now? I mean, we, what...
We only have one real game in town, or two. It's these, it's the hazardous waste transport companies. We have Safety Clean, and we have Clean Harbors, and Clean Harbors now own Safety Clean.
Okay, but, so an individual has, you know, they've changed the oil, and they, yeah...
Oh, individuals, you can take it to Bond, you can take it to whoever has, likes to burn oil.
Okay, so for the last year, we have not been collecting oil?
But people drop it off anyway.
They are.
They persistently, and it's because we lack security.
Yeah.
Yes, so it's been, I clean it up twice a year on, also hazardous waste day.
Okay, so you're going to meet with them?
I'm meeting...
We're going to meet with them next week to try to develop the plan to move forward with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The ad for administrative support's been, is running, is going to be running in three publications, whatever. The superintendent, search for water superintendent, as we've met with a potential candidate, I'm going to get a bona fide application, the person doesn't have the credentials that we were looking for, but doesn't seem to be scared away by our level of compensation. So, the first person that came our way that Joe had met is, he's a circuit rider, water system operator, and he does many, he must have 25 or 30 clients, but his going rate is $65 an hour, but you know, you're, he's, you know, he's, he's got it all. I mean, that's actually, he does a range of systems, so he has various certifications. And, anyway, so we're trying a different route. Let's see, what else did I want, oh, Twitchell Hill, I was wondering who should meet with, if we, I called Jay Dolmich, is very happy to meet with somebody, he's got a stormwater background.
Mm-hmm.
I had run into Abigail Beck, but she's leaving country, she's also stormwater, that had been her discipline, her expertise, but I'm wondering who should meet and walk the road with Jay, or...
When do I meet?
I'm just not quite sure of how involved the work is that we want to do, I just posed it as, just the general concept of a drainage system for that road, what it is we need to do, what would be the major features, and I don't even know if he would need to price it out, because we could probably cost estimate on our own.
And we can, I think we could cost it, but just...
Right, it's just, it's to reaffirm the approach that we have.
Right, right.
So, and it's just his hourly rate, so he's available anytime next week.
I think we need to do that.
Right.
So, Ken, would you like to?
Yeah.
Well, to meet, we can agree on a time, do you want to stop by tomorrow and we'll talk about it?
Yeah, yeah. The only, I can't, if it's going to be this week, I can't go Friday, that's all.
No, uh...
Next week.
Oh, well, we'll see, I was thinking next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Does that have to be during the day?
Uh, the only other, I mean, operationally, the zoning administrator has been swamped, and has backlogged on permits, getting them out the door, and then we have a whole other area of, I think that the job was parked with the zoning administration, because it does somewhat make sense, is that we don't have a 911 coordinator...
Yeah, it is part of the...
And I just got a letter, a little bit of a, from the state, saying, look, we needed this certain report, and we haven't gotten it, and it's, I did have someone, Judy Connect was working on a lot of this details for us, trying, I just, because she's busy and available and likes detailed work, but I'm just, we're just not quite there to submit this report, so I just, I'm going to need time to get that.
And that is, that is very definitely part of the zoning administrator's job description.
And all it is, is they need to verify for the 911 calling system, they need your lowest and highest addresses on each road, that's really what it is, it's called your R S A G. And I used to do this in my prior job, so it's no trouble, but I think that that, yeah, so that a 911 coordinator is very important.
Hmm. I mean, we have all our roads listed alphabetically, and, you know...
Oh, yeah, we have the atlases, but it's all the updates, we haven't been updating the systems, I think, since Tony left, really.
Yeah.
Because we haven't had a lot of hours for a zoning administrator.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Push a button.
We're getting, we got the safe end for Bill, we're getting carpet September 5th and 6th.
I do, I did kind of agree that if we could work with Rob to have an alternate plug-in site for the server, to have it not be offline, would be a positive thing.
It would be, I just don't know where.
That's why we're...
We're going to have to, it'll be on top of Judy's refrigerator or some such thing, on the other side of the wall.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Well, except that we have to tear apart that office as well.
But, yeah.
So, we'll get his take on that.
Skyhook.
Skyhook.
All right, thank you. Other business, Ken?
I don't know if this fits or not, but we just paid off one of the dump trucks tonight, right?
Yes.
I would like to see if there was any way that we could set up a sinking fund for each, in every piece of equipment, in each and every project we want to do. I did a little talk with Bill one time, one day, and if we'd had a sinking fund of $40,000 a year, when that garage was built over there, we would now have over $2 million, or real close to it.
Yeah.
And I just can't see, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to be financing even with the interest rates today, when you can have a sinking fund for the equipment.
Right, and we do have some of those, some of those are...
No, no, we do, I didn't, I wonder where we were financing quite as much as we are until I get on this board.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, that's actually really good stuff to, as we, when we start working on budgets later in the year, that's when we began looking at those types of things and setting those up.
Right.
Now, in general, to bring it, raise it now is a good idea, but we'll actually begin working and looking at how to begin funding those things when we set up the budget in the fall.
Right, because, I mean, the trucks are probably the things you change most often.
Well, depending on the vehicle, I think we're from seven to 10 years.
Yeah, right.
Kind of our, at least the current rate for...
Right, but you can take, like, heavy equipment, my old backhoe is 40 years old next year.
Right.
So, I mean...
Yeah, exactly, so then, again, we start setting, we can look at doing that as we, when we start on the budget in the fall.
Right, right, okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mitch?
Happy to report that I have the draft of the appointment policy out, I'm waiting for some feedback from a couple people, but if we could, no, no, on the board.
Oh, oh, random people, okay. God, I was going to say, I think, did I miss that?
The people that were asked to be involved originally.
Got it, okay.
And if we can get that on the agenda, either the next meeting or the first meeting in September, and I'll make sure everyone gets it before then, and we can either have a public hearing, or we can discuss it, and then have a public hearing.
So, what meeting, you're going to say, by the first meeting in September, you said? Or next one?
Either or, the first, either the 17th, I should get my feedback this week or next, and I get it out to everybody on the board, and...
Let's do it, let's plan on, let's plan on it, Margie, because that was, actually, that was one of my things I was going to ask.
Well, I'm adding it right now, because we have to warn this meeting by next, I have to post it next Wednesday.
Do it, let's do it for the first meeting in September, then.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That's when we'll do the policy, the approval policy, when we'll have it on the agenda. Okay. Thank you, that was actually one of the things, so I got one last thing on my other business.
My other question is, are you going to, sorry, Mitch?
Mitch, anything else?
Uh, no.
Karen? Margie?
Yeah, your September meeting is on Labor Day, first, that's Labor Day night. Did you want to meet Tuesday, the following night?
I will be out of the, out of the state that week, so you can be, feel free to meet, but Karen will be your fearless leader that, if you do.
How about the first, how about the week, Monday after?
The 9th, yeah.
I could do that.
Then you would do back-to-back?
Yeah, we'd do 9th and 16th.
9th and 16th.
9th and 16th.
You wouldn't be live, just so you know.
On the 9th, we wouldn't be live?
No, because you would be conflicting with Bennington Select.
Right.
Right, whenever I don't...
Okay, so it'll be taped.
Thanks, Dan, taped, taped is fine. Anything else, Margie? All right, one last thing that I have, that, and it's an easy one, we have the, we need to sign the sign ordinance.
Parking.
Parking ordinance, I'm sorry, parking ordinance, not sign ordinance, geez, get that, would get people excited, no, parking ordinance, we just need to sign that, so that's our last, that's the only thing I have, because the other things were, Margie and Mitch already asked.
This is as it was finalized, posted, it's now posted all over town, and that's your back page.
Okay.
Uh-huh. Through cleaning, my scans.
Can't, not until you sign it.
Yeah.
Got to do it, you're on the clock.
Okay.
As you were saying, Ken. Thank you all tonight for coming out and doing the good work tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for staying.